You're live.
Okay. So we're going to call the city council meeting of April 13, 2020 to order. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Here.
Bavacqua?
Here.
Albrecht?
Here.
Keithley?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Sage?
Here.
Salvia? Salvia, where'd she go?
She's having a computer reboot problem. She said she'll be on as soon as...
I'm going to mark her as here because she was just here and we know she's coming back into the closed session.
Okay.
Okay.
We have requests for a closed session strategy negotiation session connected with negotiations of collective bargaining agreement. So do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll move.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Keithley. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bavacqua? Yes?
He said yes, I think.
Yeah.
Yep.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Keithley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Okay, I will be leaving the meeting and see you back here at 7:00.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Leanne.
Yep.
Okay, um, City Manager Wing, go ahead.
All right, just making sure CMN dropped us from the broadcast here, so. Um, similar to, um, two weeks ago when we talked about the premium pay for...
Okay, we will call to order again the city council meeting of April 13, 2020. Madam Clerk, the role.
Bixson?
Here.
Bavacqua?
Here.
Albrecht?
Here.
Keithley?
Here.
Peterson? Sage?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
Peter is just, um, checking in right now.
Okay. So we'll... Wait to see. Anne, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, now we are ready for, uh, the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance...
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the...
For which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Invisible.
Liberty.
Just grow.
All right, thank you, everybody. And welcome to the second virtual city council meeting in our city's history. Well, first we will move to the approval of the minutes. It's first a consideration of this, the regular meeting of March 30, 2020, and the consideration of the minutes for the special meeting of March 30, 2020.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Albrecht. Discussion, Councilmember Keithley.
There was, uh, one correction noted.
Okay.
I did receive that and it's fairly minor, um, regarding, um, Councilmembers Keithley's comments regarding rah-rah, so I will make those.
Okay, thank you.
Right, yeah.
Um, Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bavacqua? Albrecht?
Yes.
Keithley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. First is a consideration of extended due date for utility bill penalty and interest. Second is a resolution to extend suspension of parking fees through April 30, 2020. And C, consideration of a grant writer-retainer for COVID-19 and future grants.
Motion to approve all three, I mean, A and B, and like to discuss C or make a comment.
Okay, so, uh, motion by Councilmember Peterson for A and B?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Discussion, Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Keithley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you very much to some, to city administration for looking into finding somebody that is actually going to work in our best interest to find the necessary grants and also be able to work on them for us. I know it's a tough job and I think it's, uh, dollars well spent even during this time. Thank you.
So is that a motion, Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, sir.
All right, motion by Councilmember Peterson?
I will second it and concur with, uh, Councilmember Peterson. Uh, it's great that we're getting ahead of this. Appreciate it very much.
So it's a second by Councilmember Sage and I, I agree wholeheartedly. Any further comment? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Keithley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Very good. And just, I, I, I forgot to do this and, uh, Jane, we're going to put up on the screen if people want to participate in our meetings. Um, they can go to the, the website, which is up here. If they want to send us an email comment, it's at RSVP@rochester.org, rochestermish.org. And if you want to call in to participate, the number's 646-558-8656, and the meeting ID code is 123817375. So there's lots of different ways to participate, um, in this meeting. If you have comments, um, and, and let us know, we'll, we can let you comment after agenda items or at the end of the meeting, we'll have, um, public comments.
And, uh, just ask that callers who are using the phone number to, uh, indicate that they want to make a public comment by dialing star nine.
Very good. Thank you, Jane. Okay. Um, next on to legislative deliberations, consideration to approve an addendum to the inter-local service agreement for public work services. Uh, Mr. Cityman?
Yeah, actually, I'm going to have Sandy jump in on this one and then I'm happy to, uh, answer any questions, um, regarding this particular item.
All right, Sandy, welcome.
Hi, everyone. Um, the city of Auburn Hills and Rochester Hills, along with Rochester, have had an inter-local agreement together since 2012. At this point in time, Orion Township has asked to also join our agreement. This inter-local service agreement is actually for public services, so, um, the public work services in particular. And it would be a collaborative agreement that allows any of the entities within the agreement to call upon one another to borrow any kind of resources, whether it be equipment or specialized staff. These, um, these expenses are reimbursable to us under the M.DOT Schedule C rates, so we would not be losing anything. I did want to point out that, um, Orion Township is a little bit further than the public work services for Rochester Hills as well as Auburn Hills. So instead of, um, six miles or nine miles, their campus is actually approximately 12 miles away from us. I did speak with the Rochester Hills Public Service Director, Alan Schnack. They actually have this upon their agenda tonight for approval. Um, their director is also recommending this agreement move forward without any, um, any issues. Happy to answer any questions you might have about the agreement.
Questions, City Council?
No comment, Mayor.
Comment, Ms., uh, Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Sandy, I want to thank you very much for the report. Um, it was very, um, very detailed and answered all of my questions that I had. Um, the reservation which you addressed regarding the, uh, 12 miles away from here. Uh, it does seem like it's a little odd, but I do understand where they're coming from and how it could help us in the future, so I thank you for all your research on it to make sure we can, uh, save money in the future as well, especially now during this time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember Keithley?
Hi, Sandy. Thank you for this report. I think it was really thorough. I do have a question about use and how often we've used the service with Rochester Hills and Auburn Hills in the past and how you expect that use to increase if we add Lake Orion?
At this point in time, we have not had any, um, usage or, um, with Auburn Hills. However, with Rochester Hills, we've reported that we've used them approximately four or five times in the last two years. A lot of times it's us asking to utilize their services for sewer vac or sewer cammering services. Our superintendent is able to arrange that a few days ahead of time, so we don't have to do it on an emergency basis. So in terms of additional use by joining Orion, I don't know at this time that it would really increase it, but it would give us an additional valuable resource if we did have an emergency situation, especially because they do have a few pieces of specialized equipment that our city does not have, so we would save on the dollars of trying to purchase those for our own use when we could collaboratively borrow them from their entity.
Uh, Councilmember Salvia?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Sandy. This seems like a, a good addition to the agreement. Um, from my perspective, it seems like we have more to benefit from than cost potentially it would be to the city. So I think this is a good thing and so, um, I can make a motion to, what are we looking, to amend the inter-local service agreement for public works to include, um, Orion Township.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Salvia, support by Councilmember Peterson. Discussion, further discussion?
I had one other, um, comment. Um, if you could in the future, remind us about how this is working. So if there's a time where we're using it or there, you know, we're benefiting from it, you know, remind us how this is going, you know? Not in an official report, but just remind us how this is, how it's going.
I'd be happy to.
Very good. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Keithley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sa, Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Now, in reports, uh, in regular business, received a report and recommendation for 2020 road resurfacing from the Infrastructure Committee, uh, Mr. City Manager, and I see we, I know we have a couple of Infrastructure Committee members here as well.
Yeah, so let me just start this off and then I'll, I'll again pull in, uh, Sandy, and then we also have, uh, one of our engineers, uh, Seal, uh, to pull up a map and, uh, talk about the various projects. Um, the Infrastructure Committee has been, you know, working diligently since, uh, um, this past fall and, um, we were on track to make a recommendation, um, probably at the end of March. However, um, the COVID-19 did, uh, kind of throw us a curveball. Um, I met with our internal staff along with our engineers to basically reevaluate, um, this, uh, current year to see if we could reutilize some of our current dollars as well as look at, um, next year's upcoming, uh, or upcoming fiscal year, uh, to see next, next year's projects, if we could reduce them, um, as we still don't have all of the known variables. Um, the committee, after, uh, some deliberation, um, agreed with staff and our engineers' recommendation and, uh, Sandy and Seal, if you could walk us through, and then I do know there are several members of council that are a part of the Infrastructure Committee that may have comments as well.
Yes. Hello again. Feel like it's been so long. So I, I would like to share my screen with you as I have a few maps and some charts, uh, to utilize in our discussion. So bear with me one second while I get to that part. And... Sorry. There we go. Okay.
All right.
All right, there we go. So had to get that map up there. Thank you. So in looking at this, our Infrastructure Committee, as Blaine indicated, has looked at several of the different conditions of the roads and we have been looking at the DWRF, which is the Drinking Water Revolving Fund Loan Program that we have, which will modify some of our water mains and replace them. And in doing so, we also realized that, um, our PESA ratings, which I will switch over, this map has been shared before with you, indicates that many of our roads are labeled in poor condition per the PESA ratings of this last year. So when we, when we were looking at the DWRF program, we realized that we had several roads that were going to be impacted by this program and that also includes, um, some of the construction projects that will be coming forward, such as the Romeo Realignment Project and potentially a Rochester Road, um, paving project by M.DOT. So with those additional construction projects that are coming, the Infrastructure Committee felt it imperative that we take a look at a few of the roads and see if in this fiscal year we were able to allocate some dollars to do some mill and fill projects. We determined that Water Street, Old Town, Elizabeth Street, and Second Street would all benefit from a mill and fill repaving at this point in time because those would be the four roads that would be used as alternate routes during some of the construction projects coming forward. Um, AEW did request bids from a few, from three different contractors and the lowest bid was from Ajax Paving for 288,235 for all four of these roads.
Could, could you jump, uh, back to the, the other map? Just so they can see.
Sorry. Thank you. Get back to the, there we go. So we can actually see, these in blue are the four roads that we are recommending to have mill and fill resurfacing done on the current fiscal year, so, um, prior to July 1st. In evaluating our budget and determining if we were able to, um, reallocate some of the funds for these projects, we did look at the cost of what would be in the DDA versus what would be a city cost. The DDA portion of this project would be 216,300 and the city cost would be 115,800 dollars. In looking at those costs, we did have a very light winter in terms of our winter maintenance and therefore we do have funds available in our winter maintenance materials, our snow hauling and our winter maintenance in our major road funds that we could reallocate to do this mill and fill prior to July 1st, so out of our current budget. One of the other significant amounts that we have is we had money put aside to do some stormwater work. Um, there was a total of 125,000 put into that line item and we believe that we should be able to do some of the CCTV work on those storm pipes. However, based upon the Corona pandemic, we do not believe at this time we would be able to actually bid and schedule contractors prior to July 1st. So we are recommending that 75,800 dollars of that stormwater money be reallocated to this mill and fill project instead. Going forward into the next fiscal year, we are, um, asking for that money in our initial budget so that we can do that work in the next fiscal year and, um, Public Works is working on those items. So I'm going to zoom back out on this project map. And so DPW and the Infrastructure Committee and city and staff are looking for a recommendation to approve Ajax Paving to do this project as well as reallocation of these funds toward the mill and fill. But I know that in part of this process, we've also discussed quite a bit about the, um, the DWRF project and to Seal wanted to talk a little bit about that project and some of the, um, summary notes were included in the memo for your reference. And Seal?
Seal, are you there? We go, yeah, so basically this map shows the DWRF projects in purple and we're planning on doing these projects in 2021. Uh, Sandy, if you go back to the estimate, please?
Yes.
Thank you. So at the bottom of this table, uh, we listed the 2021 projects, uh, as reconstruction projects. The PESA rating fee for, for these roads, they're less than three. And since the, which it means if it's less than three, it needs to be, they're in need for reconstruction. We cannot mill and fill them, um, they're in bad shape and then they need to be reconstructed. We listed Oak Street, uh, into two segments, DDA and non-DDA. So basically, um, since we're doing the water main replacement along these roads, Oak and Mahaffey, we can use as part of the DWRF, uh, projects, we can use DWRF loan to pay at least for almost half of the road replacement. And the other half of the road will be repla, will be replaced by using the city road funds, which is basically we're showing that in the yellow column. And so the yellow column shows the total construction cost for each segment. And then in the red columns, we're showing the DDA portion. The purple columns shows the, uh, road reconstruction outside DDA, so we'll be using the city road funds to pay for the outside DDA, um, limits. And then the total cost for both, um, phases, both, uh, limit DDA and non-DDA is the, for Oak Street for both segments is 717,600. If we don't use DW, DWRF projects, then DWRF funds, sorry, then the total cost will be 1.3 million. We're saving under Oak Street about 600,000 if we go with DWRF funds. For Mahaffey, if we use DWRF funds, the cost for the city, using the city funds will be 253. If we don't use DWRF fund, funds will be 464. So we'll be saving about 211,000 if we go with DWRF funds. That doesn't mean that you're getting, uh, a grant, it's a loan. You still need to pay that 899, 809,000, the total cost savings, but we'll be under the DWRF loan for, you'll be, you'll be paying it back over 20 years with low interest rate. So that's all I have.
And to Seal, I guess maybe for council, uh, this is part of our complete street project, so instead of just tearing up one side of the road, um, that might have the water main or the sewer, we're actually looking at, uh, completing both, um, so that the road is completely, um, finished as well as the water and the, and the sewer pipe, um, all at the same time. So that's what we're calling a complete street. And, um, that really allows hopefully that, that portion of, uh, of road to be in good shape for 20 to 25 years without issue.
Right, so the road funds will be paying, paying for the storm sewer and road reconstruction. Sanitary sewer was already taken care of as part of the SRF project. We lined the sewers that they were in bad shape in these areas if they were any. So we're only doing water main replacement, storm sewer replacement and road reconstruction for 2021 projects.
Very good. Anything else? Uh, City Manager, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, so for, for this evening, what we're requesting is to reallocate, um, some of the funds as, as Sandy, um, requested. And then we'll be coming back, um, this late summer, early fall regarding the overall, uh, drinking water revolving fund projects. Um, that's a multi-year. We'll be looking at our, our upcoming fiscal year. That one would, will be in place at that time as well as the, uh, the, probably the next three as we look at a, a wider range. But for this evening, we just need, uh, uh, council's approval to reallocate our current funds to do on this page right here, what we're looking at, the 2020 dollars, um, along with the, the DDA part. I will note that we did have conversations with the, the DDA, uh, liaison, uh, which happens to be their chairperson and he's in support of this as well.
But, I'm sorry, we also need approval of the, to award the contract to Ajax Paving for this particular project.
Thank you.
Are those two separate motions?
It can be the same.
It can be within the one, the same motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, so I have just, uh, just a curiosity question. So Elizabeth and, um, Second Street, how, um, do we know if any of the projects are going to begin any of the construction here in the near future at all? Because that, those would be right in alignment with where the construction would take place.
Or I'm sorry, which, which two roads?
Elizabeth and Second. If they begin the condo project up Second off of Letica, there, correct? Where it leans up. And then Elizabeth down where the Moshiere project would be? If I'm looking at.
Yep. Uh, Seal, do you know when the contract?
The overlook, it's off Letica. I just see the plans for a second review. Um, there are a lot of, um, comments that they need to take care of. Um, if they hit it hard and, um, they, they address the comments and send them back to us, I can see them getting approved probably in three months. Then, then the construction will start after. But just to give you an idea, between the first submittal and second submittal, it took them probably almost a year to resubmit. I'm not saying it's going to be the same way on the third submittal, but I really, it depends on how they want to proceed with it. It depends on when they want to submit the plans again and then how they're going to be addressing the engineering comments. So the answer is it could be as soon as three months or it could be next year.
Mayor?
Um...
I think that was Nick.
Uh, Mr. Assistant City Manager, Nick Banda?
Well, our experience, we had that first middle section of Letica, Turnoff Theater Brook was under full construction and it did not affect that road. Um, so we're not as worried as, that's a good question, Councilmember Peterson. Uh, but we, we had experience now with a full-on construction project and it did not damage that road in the middle there, uh, partially because of the grade, but, uh, we are, we talked about that as staff of engineering and we don't think that would be, uh, undue pressure on that road.
Okay, I, I just wanted to, for curi- Okay, I I just wanted to for curiosity, make sure, you know, just knowing where they were.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'll make a motion then, Mayor.
I'm trying to raise my hand here, Mayor.
Yeah, okay, yeah, uh I can't see anybody now.
I know, I've been trying to do it on the screen because.
There you go, Councilmember Albrecht.
Okay, um uh and I'm sure Councilmember Salvia uh might want to jump in also. Um can you go back to the estimate page um standing?
There you go.
Um yes, we we spent a lot of time talking about this uh and I uh we went over. The leftover money from the mild winter and we all saw the benefit of the Letica uh mill and fill in the two parts. So I thought it was very prudent of administration and um and uh Sandy to recommend this melon fill of these these four roads. The Water Street, Old Town, Elizabeth and Second Street. We then talked about the um uh the bids that came in, uh which are in your packets. And um uh all agreed that Ajax paving industries um not only was the lower lowest bid, but uh um we felt we felt comfortable with that. So um I think Councilmember Peterson already made a motion, that's what I was going to do, but I'll just let her uh uh make the motion. I just wanted to say we on the Infrastructure Committee um unanimously approve that Ben, who has money in the game, being the DDA Chair. Uh has money set aside for this, so I think uh the the response we'll get from the residents for doing this on these four roads will be very positive. And it's a good use of of unused dollars.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Peterson, a support by Councilmember Albrecht, Councilmember Salvia, did you?
Yes, discussion on the motion.
Here we go.
Okay, so um yes, I do think that this um proposal, this motion that's on the table. To me, it's a it's a prudent use of resources in an environment where there is uncertainty around our our revenues and our budgets in the future. But yet at the same time, we still need to keep, you know, moving the needle, so to speak, where we know we've we're looking at that chart of red roads. And we want to keep doing the maintenance and improving our infrastructure. So I feel like this is a good um allocation towards that, especially reusing funds that we did not spend due to the light winter. And so um you know, I look forward to the continued discussions around the DWRF project. Because to me, that is still the most important infrastructure item we have for the city. Um but I'm happy to support this right now. Thank you.
Very good.
Now, Mayor, and I just I want I would just wanted to say thank you all for all the collaboration on this project and moving these ones forward. Uh just because we do need to still take care of things and I appreciate everyone finding the best way to do that during these times.
Very good. Any other comments from council? I I'd just like to say, I I think by reallocating existing funds, this is a great project. So I supported, you know, I I think we should, you know, as we said the last meeting, I I probably would not support any new spending. Um you know, right now with the uncertainty, but I I think this is a uh excellent use of assets that. You know, and work that has to be done, so. Uh Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Keith Lee.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Seal.
Thank you.
Uh next is a recommendation for protocol regarding canceled and postponed special events. Uh Mr. Managers, or is this the uh Police Chief?
Yeah, the Police Chief's gonna uh speak uh on this one, uh his his recommendation, I'm uh in complete uh agreement with. And this is in regards to uh the various special events that we uh have previously councils approved. Um as well as during the stay at home um order, there are some events that uh have been canceled and the chief will uh provide his his recommendation and. Um make his his request that um he basically be able to administratively. Reschedule those uh events that um still could be rescheduled potentially at a later date. So Chief, if you could provide some of those details.
Welcome, Chief.
Certainly, thank you. Um we we have been in contact with various um event holders uh throughout this period. Uh some of them, um we've already canceled them or they have actually canceled them themselves. Some are just going to forego their events for this year, others are looking to try to reschedule them. And I guess what we're looking for is an authorization to be able to administratively work with the event calendar. And uh reschedule those where we know we can fit them in. And then we would provide that notice by uh bringing back the event calendar as we begin to bring events uh back throughout the uh the rest of the calendar year. Um the other consideration is is what can we do for these folks that have paid a non-refundable uh application fee to hold events that are canceled? And some of these are recurring events and the thought was to to be able to uh take those events on for next year without having them pay. The uh application fee. Uh I guess the thought is is we already have that information, we can process the event application next year. And again, do that administratively through the normal process without charging the fee. Um because some of that work that goes into the fee is already done, if you will. Um so that's basically what we're trying to look at and we'll try to continue to work with event holders through this period. And our goal is obviously to try to have events uh as safe as possible. Uh and when when we're able to do that, looking not only at the. Uh rules and regulations, if you will, that we get from the governor's office or the county uh executive. But also what's prudent given the what's happening in the city at the time.
Uh Councilmember Albrecht, comment?
Um yes, I I just wanted to thank the chief, I think with um as we're in the middle of this crisis at some point in time. We're going to slowly get back to reality, um but it'll be very slow and looking at the events canceled really basically through June. Um I think it's a a a good idea that we give that authority to the Chief Shettenham to uh allow two things. I guess I'll make a motion, one to allow uh uh the chief to uh make changes to work some of these events back into the calendar for the remainder of twenty twenty calendar year twenty twenty. And for those events that can't be rescheduled in twenty twenty to weigh the twenty twenty one application fee for those events.
Support.
No, motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Peterson, discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Um. Who was that?
Oh, sorry, it was Ann.
It's uh Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um and uh thank you, Mark, and thank you very much, Chief. Um uh going through uh the time and walking the city and things like that and seeing this event calendar and knowing how fast it could have, you know, could fill up. Um I am glad we are taking these steps, uh so the residents of the community can enjoy the park um without having so much concern of these happening. And one hundred percent in support of refunding their money as well. Um and hopefully they'll just be back um at a later date, but in the meantime, hopefully we can continue enjoying our park as well. It's hard finding some open space to just enjoy this time, so thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Keith Lee.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is received the two thousand nineteen annual liquor inspection report. Mister uh Police Chief.
Uh yes, so uh this is the annual report where we go through and do a number of things with all of our liquor establishments, those that serve liquor by the glass. So basically your bars and restaurants. Myself and Sid Brown is one of his last official acts as the building official. Uh went and inspected each of the establishments, looking at it for liquor violations as well as health and safety violations. Um I say this every year, but it gets better every year. Um so people are really attentive to that, the most common thing we find are exit lights uh that are burned out or need a new battery. And so uh we follow up and make sure that all those things that we did find, uh those minor violations are corrected. Um the other thing that we look at is is activity at all the locations. So you have a long list there of police calls uh to each of the establishments. And really nothing uh comes particularly to mind, it's troublesome when we look at those uh establishments as to any particular place where. We have a greater uh calls for service or things that that are, I guess, out of the ordinary or concerning. Um the other thing that we look at is what for violations of the Liquor Control Commission uh rules and regulations. And we did have some establishments this year on two occasions where the Liquor Control Commission used uh liquor decoys. And we're able to um have violations at some of those establishments. Uh the fines there are noted and uh that they were paid and we followed up uh with those as well to make sure that. Uh action was taken uh with the employees and staff and that uh the learning segment of of getting in trouble. Uh was completed and so that uh it doesn't happen in the future. Um so the other concern that we looked at is whether taxes and outstanding payments are paid uh to the city. We do have some establishments that are behind in their taxes. Um Nick Banda has reached out to all of those establishments that uh do have an outstanding balance. And uh we'll continue to work with them. Um given that certainly the times uh as they are currently, uh we're just asking, uh rather than taking any uh punitive action right now. In regards to their liquor licenses, that we uh be allowed to have some time to continue to work with those establishments. Uh to either get them on a payment plan or better yet, get those uh taxes paid. Um but obviously, uh some of these establishments aren't even open for business currently. Um so we are just asking for time to be able to continue to work with them uh with that goal in mind. Uh be prepared for any questions that you might have about the report.
Questions, council?
Nope, city looks good.
Yeah, not too many liquor violations with the city shutdown, is there?
Only in the park.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, next.
Could we have a motion to receive the annual report so it could be put in the reported in the minutes?
Council uh uh motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Report.
Report by Councilmember Salvia, uh Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Thank you. Dixon.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Keith Lee.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the update on the census two thousand and twenty. Mister City Manager.
Actually, Jane's going to take it and this might just give me a quick opportunity too. I know the mayor is probably off to the side looking, but we've not seen any uh hands for public comments, so that's why he's just moving on. I'm not sure everybody else has that same little visual of a a hand raised or not, but um if we do have public comment, um um we will uh jump in if uh if we see some. And if Jane or I see see some too, Mayor, we'll we'll make sure to let you know. But as of now, there's not been any uh public comment on any of these items.
Very good, thank you. Uh Jane, welcome.
Yes, uh thank you, um Mister Mayor and Council, uh just a quick update because April is census month. And in spite of kind of all of the adjustments we've had to make, we're still trying to get people to self-report using the online tool and the phone. Uh so currently, we are doing pretty well in the self-report, I'm gonna bring up a map here and we can kind of see visualize where we're at within the region. And uh so we're at a sixty four percent response rate. And the state of Michigan is at a uh fifty four percent response rate and the United States is at forty seven point nine percent. Um so we are continuing to work on getting the residents to respond to the census. We've had to pivot a lot of our efforts, uh many of our commission, we had the Complete Count Committee, many of our efforts were focused on in-person. Um kind of outreach and trying to get people into areas where they could come in and fill out the census or work with ESL classes. But we're now uh still targeting people with electronic messaging, we're working with the apartment complexes and condo complexes and trying to get them to at least post signs or put things in their messaging to their residents as well. Uh people who, you know, might be working from home, encouraging them to take a ten minute census break and just complete the census. Uh so we are doing well, uh last twenty ten, the last census, we were at a seventy five percent uh self-reporting rate. And so that self-reporting rate is that number before they start going out and sending out physical mailers and getting people knocking on the doors. So we want to get that as high as possible. And uh I think that we can continue to push towards, we're looking at that eighty five to ninety percent uh complete response rate is kind of a goal. So um I think we're in good shape, but just continue to remind your neighbors and get the message for the census out there. And uh if anyone has any questions, I'm ready for to receive those.
Very good, thank you, Jane. Um please, please do it, I'll just say I did it, it was very easy, it took two minutes, so it's quite easy, so.
I have I have a question, Mister Mayor.
Uh Mister Sage.
Thank you, sir. Uh Jane, um how have we engaged the homeowners associations? Did we give them any script letter, if you will, to send out to?
Uh yeah, so they were, I've been communicating with them uh to, you know, every property management group or HOA group is a little differently run. So they've been given uh graphics, they've been given messaging. Uh so I've sent them kind of flyers that they can print out and post or if they want to put those uh on their, you know, message boards or however they might communicate with their residents. And then also kind of quick blurbs that we've been using to message for uh how the city might be able to help you with the census and just kind of some of the language that we've been using as well.
Thank you.
Mayor, if it's helpful helpful, maybe uh Jane could actually forward to all the council members, maybe for your own social media uh to help promote this. Uh again, uh w- we are not able to to kind of hit the ground and and knock on doors during this time. So uh e- even utilizing your own uh networks and contacts could be helpful uh as we as we make a big push. Because these are real dollars um that that would be coming in that helps us with uh really our overall funding. So um being counted is extremely important and we only get to do this every ten years.
Very good. Um. Is that it on that subject?
Yeah, we don't, we don't need a motion, uh this was more of an update and again, uh we we were hoping uh to to, you know, uh with a different cir- set of circumstances to uh hopefully say that we were at our seventy five percent. But uh during the COVID time, this is uh you know, still not a bad turnout at this point, uh and there is still time left this month.
Very good. Um. Next is a consideration of homeowners association's street lighting LED program, Mister City Manager.
Yes, this is the final installment of our ongoing LED program um that our finance director, Anthony Maggio, has been been working on. Uh he, along with Attorney Crott, drafted the um the template uh agreement that um is in council's packets on page seventy three through, I want to say seventy five, if I remember. Um and this would extend our our efforts and allow the HOAs to participate in the uh LED program. Which again is a reduction in both electricity as well as converting over to a a lower uh. Overall cost, so there's a a win for both the homeowners association as well as the overall environment as well as the city. So uh this is a program that uh very supportive and thankful that our finance director continues to champion this. And I don't know if Attorney Crott has any comments.
Mister Attorney.
Yes, thank you. So yeah, what Blain has said is uh is accurate. Uh this template was based on the one that we used with this with the homeowners association some years ago, um not related to the ERC. Um that what the company that's been uh using now, so this is um a situation where the city has an opportunity to. So this is a situation where the city has an opportunity to, I guess, broker without being a member of an agreement with, between the homeowners association and ERC, much like the city had an agreement with ERC. Homeowners Association would do that, too. So the city pays a portion of the streetlights. And the example here was forty-nine percent. So rather than simply saying that the city would continue to pay forty-nine percent, that would actually would end up being more expensive for the homeowners association. Because a lot of the cost is in the equipment, which the city does not currently participate in now. So the way this is structured is it actually breaks out between the, you would call them the ERC electricity charges. So the city would be paying its portion of that charge, but nothing along the, we would not contribute to the portion of the maintenance or the replacement. That's strictly between ERC and the homeowners association. So Anthony went and did pro formas on this and this works from a numbers perspective. And it only serves to help out the homeowners associations that choose to do this as well as the city. So I think it's a good next step.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson, and then Councilmember Albrecht.
Oh, thank you, but I think Mark was first, but does.
Councilmember, Councilmember Albrecht.
I'm, I don't know how I got into this, but I'm also on the board at my homeowners association. When you complain about something, they add you to the board. So we've been talking about lights in our development, which is about two hundred and twenty homes for several years. And as Attorney Crott and and Blaine, wing city manager, said, it's prohibitive. We can't go out and replace lights. So when Anthony brought this forward to us many months ago for the city, it was, it was like, wow, this is almost too good to be true. But when we saw the results of the the lighting in the city and and the reduction in cost to the city for the DTE costs and converting to LED is what most communities want to do over time. I remember asking then, is this something we could do for the for the homeowners? So to finally see this come up before city council, along with the protection that we, the city, are not going to pay for the streetlights, the homeowners associations need to do that. But the city will benefit from the reduced energy costs if, once the, once the homeowners convert. And again, this is available to, you know, I don't know how many associations we have in the in the city, Blaine. But to me, this is just a good idea that continues to roll out and would love to be able to present this to our homeowners association if in fact this gets, this this gets approved. So I would make a motion to approve the street lighting HOA program and authorize the city manager upon review of each HOA's cost benefit analysis to be able to do the agreement with the HOA.
Support.
Very good. So a motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Keith Lee. Comment first, Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you very much. You know, I wanted to echo those comments as well. Mine are also just basically a compliment to Anthony and the work he's done on this. Just seeing all the changes that have taken place at the city, knowing that passing along these savings to this homeowners associations is just a huge, a huge benefit. And I am really glad that we're able to do this and that they put in the hard work to get this to the forefront for us quickly, too.
Very good. Councilmember Keith Lee.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to our administration for putting the work and the effort into getting us this program. I think it's been a huge success for our city and I'm very excited to see it being expanded to our homeowners associations.
Very good. Further comments? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Keith Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Very good. Next, on to a discussion of the creation of the Tree Subcommittee. I think in the last meeting, we decided to form a subcommittee because we've been going round and round a little bit, a lot of good comments. So I think it's high time that we did that and, you know, have get some recommendations on the break back to council. And talking with the city attorney, you know, we have a moratorium now, but I think we need, you know, attorney thought it was a good idea that we be making progress on this. Then also hopefully, you know, while people maybe have a little more time, they can work on this. So today I would like to appoint from the city council, I'd like to appoint Mayor Proten, Bavacqua, Councilmember Albrecht, and Councilmember Salvia to the Tree Committee. And then we have to, a invitation to a resident and hopefully an invitation to a builder person has experience in town to round out the committee as there was feedback last time to have those people be a part of that. So hopefully, we can get moving on to that as quickly as as possible. Any comments, questions?
Mayor?
Councilmember Salvia?
Yes, what is the expected response back to council with this committee timeline-wise?
I don't know. City manager Blaine, I guess I would say is, you know, by not the next meeting, but maybe by the next, you know, the next meeting, a month, a few meetings. Mr. Manager, if you have any ideas? You're.
Mute.
Mute? There you go.
Yep, sorry, three, I would say three, about three, three and a half weeks so that we could bring it back to council, not at the next meeting, but the following.
Okay.
Okay. The next subject is the discussion of the open burning issue. You know, we talked about that a bunch and it was, you know, time to bring it back. Again, I don't think we're gonna make a decision tonight, but again, a chance for more discussion. And Mr. City Manager, I think the fire chief had, you know, a decision tree that he wanted to run by or you wanted to run by us. So, Mr. Manager, do you want to do that?
Yeah, since the, since we have the fire chief here and he's the one that oversees the the fire department, I'd rather have the chief walk us through his thought process. But I think he did summarize it. We've we've had several discussions and and today we're hoping for continuation. And if the chief could explain his decision tree, again, we're looking at the council packet around page eighty, eighty-one.
Chief. Thank you, Blaine. Mr. Mayor, city council, I tried to put together a little bit of a decision tree for you to kind of step through to help guide your discussion. As you see, it kind of starts off from a basic element of whether we want to have open burn or we don't want to have open burn. And then it gets into a couple of the points that are kind of ambiguous in the current, the way the code is written. I think what Attorney Crott has put together for your consideration helps to answer a few of those questions. But based on discussion that we've had with council in the past, in the sense of things like reasonable distances or safe places, our terms that could be fit into the present or the suggested changes to the code that gives a little bit of leeway depending on the lot size and the conditions that are present so that we don't set up a bunch of circumstances that would be non-conforming. But really, kind of the very first question that council would would take a look at is, is do we want to have recreational fires or not have recreational fires? And then using the decision tree to step through for potential discussion.
Okay, now, why don't you? I mean, I don't think we're gonna make a decision on this tonight. Or do we want, do we want to answer that first question?
Mr. Mayor, I think that the key is, is, you know, this is a tough format to go ahead and have a good, open discussion. To your point, and maybe this is something the council wants to take a look at. Or really, it was, the whole point about the decision tree was to be able to get council to think about any other questions or any other thoughts in regards to this potential change.
Okay, so Councilmember Albrecht, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I I've been thinking about this for the last four weeks. I did read the public comment letter we received that weighing in on this. And I went back to the original code, we read it today. And I'm getting an echo from somewhere, I don't know what.
You guys hear? Everybody, everybody could mute, it might help.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, I'm thinking we've lost our way a little bit. When you look at the original code, it does address that we can allow outside fires in code three oh seven dash one dash one. So I asked the, so I'm going, okay, we're looking at this because maybe it needs to be updated. So I asked the fire chief, I said, okay, chief, how many fires have we had in the city over the last five years? I probably could have gone back further than that, that started or originated from a fire pit or an outdoor area? And he said, there's none. So so I asked, why are we looking at this now? And 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 to me, as I, I think this is an overreach. You know, it's, should residential outdoor fire be allowed in the decision tree? It already is under this code. Then we get into, is there a restriction on the size of the fire pit? Okay, is the next step, how big of a grill can you have? How big of a pizza oven can you have outside? I just think we're going down a path of adding to an ordinance that doesn't need to be added to. Now, my point of view may be unpopular with some people. However, I've talked to a lot of people in the last month about this. And the feeling is, you're gonna ban fires? Are you serious? So I, you know, my feeling is that we have a code in place. It's been working. It's the changes to this, again, I, God forbid, we ever have a fire started by a fire pit. But evidence shows that's not been the case over the last five years. And again, the chief probably could go back far beyond that. So I, you know, I'm wondering why we continue to talk about this when I think the majority of our residents feel that what we have in place is is fine.
Very good. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I had a few questions and have done a lot of this. I guess we started talking about this because residents came before us stating that the smoke from these pits in it were unhealthy. Okay, so I I do know and sympathize with all of them. And I guess the bigger question is, too, is this just going to be citizen police then? Or are we going to use the ordinance that we have in place? Will changing the ordinance do anything to help alleviate the health concerns that people are having? And today, in light of the coronavirus and different things that are happening in our society and the world around us environmentally, you know, what other steps can we do to help protect our residents? And I think that's the bigger picture of whether or not we should be allowing outdoor burn. Unfortunately, we have two separate sets of demographics for our property sizes and, you know, land sizes for each residence on this side of town and the other side of town. I will, you know, from personal experience myself, when a neighbor starts up a fire pit outside, yep, I have to shut all my windows, too. Many people have very many sensitivities to the smoke. And that was what this brought this whole entire outdoor burn back to the forefront for us to discuss. And I think it's something that we do need to take some time and seriously consider this, like you stated, Mayor, and come back with, you know, and maybe we can send all our suggestions to the city manager and then he can send them out to us. And maybe possibly then, at that point in time, figure out how to either just enforce our ordinance and force and actually discuss the real issue, which is the smoke crossing over on property lines to people's homes. Because that's what I remember from the residents coming before us. Thank you.
Councilmember Keith Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. This is such a difficult discussion to have right now because our country is facing a pandemic affecting our ability to breathe and issues with our lungs. It's really affecting people with asthma. So I hear the concern from our resident who's brought this up to council. And I feel very sympathetic towards this cause. But when I'm looking at this decision tree, I also hear the other argument to this. And I've actually heard from residents who reached out to me personally today to express their opinion on, there's another side to it of a lot of government overreach that's already being felt, I think, right now with the climate that we're in, in our state and within our state and our county. And I don't feel ready to tackle this issue right now, especially considering these circumstances.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, and I concur with my colleagues. This does require continued deliberation and probably one that is better served when we can actually meet in person with the residents. This format may not lend itself to adequately express the the opinions. It's a little kind of sterile, if you will. But I'd also like to ask administration to provide us some some information as well. Are there municipalities within the state of Michigan that have different ordinances that we could consider? And beyond that, how about outside of Michigan, across the United States? Is there something we can at least look at if we ever get to a point of making a decision to change our ordinance?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, also, I guess, some other things that I haven't seen in any of the ordinances is there's really no penalties or fees or fines that are going to be, you know, laid out to anybody if this, if they do, you know, under this current ordinance, if we were to make any changes to it and, you know, people complain. I mean, and also, I mean, I, like it's been stated, I, I think during the times that we have right now, we need to be in a better forum because I think this is where the public needs to come before us and and state their concerns again regarding this. Because right now, health is at the forefront and everything we should do should keep the health at the top of mind of our decisions, especially when it's affecting a large number of people. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Salvia?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So yes, kind of echoing some of the other council members' comments. I think at the last meeting, we talked about this. I said, what problem are we trying to solve? And so I think really, if we're thinking about the problem that we're looking to address by any potential changes to the ordinance, has to go back to maybe an air quality issue or some metric around air quality, which speaks to the health concerns. Versus, you know, the other very important factor and what I've heard from people is, you know, this is a freedom and a liberty issue. And people right now feel like they have been taken away so many of their freedoms and liberties, you know, they can't leave their homes. So I think that is also a sensitivity right now. And then lastly, Rochester Hills published a very nice video by the fire, their fire department on this topic on kind of like, in a friendly way, describing what their ordinances are around outdoor burning. So maybe that would be a reference point for the rest of council to take a look at. I looked for it on their website, I didn't see it there, but I did see it on Facebook, and that was helpful as well. Thank you.
Very good. Further comments? Okay, Mr. City Manager, I think we have a person who raised their hand from the, from the public?
There is a public comment, the person with the last three digits of the phone number, two oh two. And for them to be unmuted. Yep.
So.
They probably have.
You have to turn your TV.
Yeah, your TV or your.
Because there's a delay.
Hello?
Yes, is that Pat Kane?
Yes.
Pat, welcome.
Thank you.
Turn your TV off.
Well, that's my computer.
Oh, okay.
Okay, turn my computer off?
No.
Okay, I'm turning it.
Turn down maybe the volume?
Yeah.
I can't, I can't, I can't. I can actually mute it.
There you go.
Well, just a minute. I turned it way down. Is that better?
Yeah.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
So go ahead.
Do I identify by name?
I probably should, yeah, thanks.
Oh, good. It's Pat Kane, eight seventeen, West Fourth, Rochester. On this ordinance, again, we're missing the big piece. We don't care about a flame, material, placement. We're talking about the byproduct, which everybody is skirting around. The byproduct is what is the health hazard. It's what the problem is, and it's what restricts people's rights to the use of enjoyment, and also is a health hazard. I would be very concerned when by ordinance, I am not allowed to enjoy my property. I am told I'm restricted to either close all my windows or leave. I cannot be in my yard. And I take exception if anybody tells me that I have to breathe what is known the world over as a health hazard that harms all life on an ongoing basis because of my neighbor's entertainment. I mean, those are my rights on my property, and all this keeps doing is defending someone's right to do something on their property without the control of the big problem, the big problem, the byproduct, the stench, the chemicals. It's never addressed. That's what people are complaining about. So our rights are taken away. When you talk about overreach, that's dictating to people on their own property, just living, having their rights taken away from them for someone's entertainment. You're talking about their health being controlled by a neighbor for that neighbor's entertainment. You're talking about us paying taxes, and we can't enjoy our yard unless we want to breathe that known health hazard and stink from it. You cannot breathe any level of wood smoke and say it is okay, and it's healthy. That's what we're not addressing. It crosses a property line. And I will say, on this side, these houses are huge. They're taking up the density, the mass, the height, and then everything everybody's got built in their yards. There's the smoke can't go up. The residue, the byproduct, the stench, the chemicals, because it's not necessarily smoke. But you can, you can smell it. It stinks. You have no choice. It cannot go up. So what is being created is low level pollution that affects the health and the use of enjoyment of people not doing this. And I've noticed something, I've heard, it's an entertainment. The proponents for this are the ones with the fire pits. So you tell me where someone's entertainment trumps someone's health and rights to have a window open in summer. We're told, close your windows. Why don't you tell them not to have a fire? We're not interfering with their life by having a window open, are we? I think this needs discussion, but it needs, again, to go to the byproduct. And somehow, nobody wants to address the stench and the chemicals that are crossing property lines. There's your problem. It's in a nutshell. It's not being addressed. That's what you have to. And you can't say I'm going to put a metric on it. You smell it. It's on your property. And nobody should be forced to have any level of it from wood burning, when it's entertainment like this, on a chronic basis. When these people burn around here, it's not a half hour. They're not cooking a hot dog. It goes on for three hours, two hours, four or five hours. It's not enough space for them to do it. And that's it. And I think from the standpoint of overreach, why don't you do it the other way? And come from the people that want a good air quality without this stench and the chemicals having to be breathed on their property. Come to the other side and take them to task. They're the ones with the stuff crossing the property line, not the other people. And that's what has to be addressed. And now with the COVID, I did forward blame even a small piece, state of Pennsylvania, gasp, this one, they're all putting out, you don't want any wood smoke in the air. And the reason why is because it affects your lungs, whether you know it or not, it's called air pollution. And the virus also settles and attacks the lung. So if your lungs get a little irritated, you may not even know it. That virus has a better chance of settling, and it's not good. And I will tell you, this has been the cleanest air in this quadrant we've had, probably in years. And people are really afraid, because the weather's warm, that as soon as things get lifted, everybody's going to be smoked out, and people will get sick from smoke, and people aren't going to be happy because they can't be in their yards again. And I think we've given up far too much for a few people with pits. And if they need to burn in a pit, then they need bigger, larger property. We are, we're too on type of each other. So it's also that problem. And if you see what's around us, you got to address the low level pollution, because the smoke does not go up, the stench, the chemicals don't. And like I said, I would take exception for any entity telling me on my property, I have to breathe a known toxic substance that serves no purpose except somebody's personal entertainment. But it's on my property. So please consider that, and look at it from the angle that I've asked it be looked at multiple times. And I do appreciate it. So thank you, and have a good evening. Bye bye.
Thank you, Pat. I think we have another city resident. So I'll unmute the person with the last numbers of four zero zero.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes. Can you give your name and address, please?
Sure. This is Chris Van den Elven up on four fifteen North Estelle.
Welcome.
Thanks. So I would like to address the smell of the campfire part of it. It sounded like that was a big concern nobody's addressing. You know, you can smell a campfire. And actually, there were candles produced that actually smelled like campfire a while ago. And I would wonder, people who have a concern about campfires actually have candles in their homes. But, you know, there's, there's a piece missing here, and that's the camaraderie that happens around the campfire, and the social gathering. And with the COVID nineteen, you know, there's a lot of us that are just, you know, kind of trapped in our residences. We can go out for walks, but you see somebody coming at you from, you know, the other side of the sidewalk, and you cross the street and go the other way. There's a lot of distancing here that people can get caught up in social isolation instead of just social distancing. And there's something about a campfire, you know, sitting there watching the flames peacefully dance around, talking with friends, and even being able to take a pregnant pause and just watch the fire. There's no electronics, you know, there's no real distractions. It's just good times with friends. You know, looking back, my kids are a little bit older now, but the times that we've had, roasting marshmallows, or cooking a hot dog over the fire, making smores, you know, the kids playing, catching fireflies in the yard. You know, there is there is something that's happened. There's something about sitting around an open fire that's been just a part of humanity for thousands of years. It's a, it's a happy nostalgic piece of growing up. I was a Cub Scout, and I learned how to build campfires. You know, we're not talking about open trash burning. We're talking about campfires around the fire pit. These aren't, you know, wet, leafy, smoldering smog piles. And you are going to be able to smell them. But that's a different thing than standing over, you know, the smoke as it rises. You can, you might be able to smell something from a distance, or just, you know, acutely attuned to it. I think that's going to be a lot different than some major health concerns standing there, you know, smoking the fire, if you will. I don't have a lot to go on here for you, but if I have cast a vote, I would, I would not want to lose that time with my friends and my family.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I want to go back to addressing Ms. Kane's concern, because it's been of one of many concerns that I've received from many of the residents. And I do know that in the past, there's been quite a few social gatherings of fire pits in the neighborhoods on this side of town. So, you know, I just think that we need to really use caution because of the health of America right now, and the health of our area. We are actually down in the bottom of a hill gully as well. So it's kind of, you know, different on this side. We're not sitting way up on the hill where breezes go easily. But I do think that the health of America has to be number one. I think that the smoke and the particles and air particles, I've read a lot of articles that Ms. Kane has spoken of, in reference from meetings. And as much as I love camaraderie and things like that, I actually value the health of everyone in our community more so, even now. And I think it's going to put a lot of people in danger, especially with the upcoming wave of different things that are supposed to be taking place as well with this virus, and how it might come out, and how people now know they have it. And I think anything we could do to eliminate the problem for anyone who has any sort of preexisting condition, I think that would be in our best interest.
Thank you. We have another person from the general public, who I'll unmute now, with the last phone number of one sixty five. Hello?
Good evening. This is Tom Crowe, ten forty six Willow Grove Court.
Welcome.
In response, in response, are you able to hear me?
Yes, yes, go ahead. Thank you.
In response to a few of the comments that were made, I would like to discuss the current situation with regards to state smoking ban, legalization of marijuana, and the pollutants that those cause, and how you are going to police open smoking within the city streets of Rochester.
Yeah, I think.
If indeed.
Excuse me, I think we're talking just about fire pits here now.
I understand that. But it is in relation, because if you are going to regulate the utilization of fire pits, it is as well a carcinogen for the state smoking ban and open smoking on the streets of Rochester in comparison. Additionally, auto and truck pollutants are mandated by the EPA. You have local businesses in downtown that create pollutants. It's a larger issue than just the open fire pit in someone's backyard that needs to be addressed if you are going to consider the comments that were made previously about the carcinogens. You currently have an ordinance on the books that does regulate open burn. It does state that it is hardwood or like hard product, not the burning of leaves. The exception that I see in this new ordinance that you're proposing is it's at the fire chief's discretion, which is completely acceptable, as he is the jurisdiction having authority in the area. So I believe that the council needs to take a look at what is going on in the overall, not just on a fire pit basis. Again, there is an exception for fire pits versus open burn. Your regulation currently addresses open burn. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Okay, so I'd probably like to suggest that we've got more information. We turn it back to the city manager to kind of maybe take another look at it to kind of reevaluate where we are and where we're going on this.
Yeah, I heard from council several requests for additional information. So I jotted those down. I will gather that information and talk with the fire chief, as well as our attorney, and bring something something back to the council.
And we will bring this back at a later date. Okay, next, on to a discussion, the creation of a reopening safely and securely advisory committee. And talking with the city manager, you know, I think they talk about this nationally and the state, but, you know, we've talked about, how do we, once this is over, hopefully it's over, you know, how do we get things back going in town with our businesses? And the city manager came up with the idea of, you know, a committee to talk about this, and to, you know, to try to do what we can as a city. So, Mr. Manager, you want to?
Sure. Thank you. Basically, as the city, as well as the country, you know, is addressing this, part of the overall next phases are really preparing to reopen, and then the recovery component. So as the city has implemented our emergency management and continuity plans, really now is a good time where we have some capacity to start looking at what it really means to reopen. And in my memo, and I won't spend a great deal of time kind of going through all the examples. But if we pull in some of the different partners, you know, which are other intergovernmental groups, as well as businesses, the county, foundation, banks, credit unions, and whatnot, we can start to look at everything from, you know, what kind of PPE? So if that's gloves, or masks, or even if it's just the hand sanitation stations, you know, cleaning off pens, and all those sort of things. What are practical things that we're going to need to do? And then also work with our businesses to see, okay, as this is a phased in approach, what challenges will businesses potentially have? What about our open spaces? What about even our council meetings? So assigning a group to start to work on this, while our first responders and our public works staff and some administrative staff are working on really still responding to the COVID nineteen, there's some capacity for our staff, along with council members, and potentially some partners, that could be addressing those next two phases, which I'll call phase two and three, which really is that next one of reopening, and then the final one of recovery. And, you know, through the different webinars, and through my own training, and through our department training, of just a natural disaster going through that overall cycle, now's a good time to start to be looking, you know, at reopening. What would it take when we finally do get from the governor's office, as well as maybe the counties, the health department, to see as we start to get there? And then finally, what could be some further steps as we are preparing for the recovery phase? So what I suggested and recommending to the mayor and council is the creation of what I just, you know, deemed, and it's not a fancy name. So if somebody wants to come up with a better, better one, or a fun acronym to it, is the reopening safely and securely advisory committee. Talking with our departments, instead of a task force, this is really what the goal is, is an advisory group. And I'm recommending three council members, and then up to 12 representatives from various groups, organizations, and partners, that staff would, you know, be able to kind of bubble forward for this committee, to start to get into it. And I can see maybe somebody from our major businesses, like the hotel. I can see somebody from the chamber. I can, you know, I can envision that this group really, you know, can come forward with some ideas to all of council. And I really see this as a positive thing for our community, as well as something that the businesses, our council, and our staff can work towards. And this isn't just a Rochester thing. I think we have some great partners that are local and regional that can participate in this. So I'm happy to answer questions. But I think it would be a good next step. And I know the governor did already today just talk about what would be some of the factors. And, you know, clearly, I didn't have any heads up information on that. But we would include some of that discussion on saying, okay, what are some of those categories? And what would realistically hit that would allow, what would trigger us to be, you know, starting what? allow, what would trigger us to be, you know, starting what phase of the reopening? And eventually where would we be at when we start to look at actually recovery?
You know, and I'll, also just, you know, kind of rolling out, you know, with the OPC and Ra-Ra, I mean, everybody's shut down, so kind of get together. I think we put the word safety in here because I think, you know, for all businesses, people feeling safe in a business is going to be paramount starting up. So I, I guess we're really looking just for a not, head nod to people think this is a good idea. Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll go forward with that. Thank you, Nancy. So we'll go forward with that. And, uh, if you're interested on serving, uh, you know, send me a text or something like that. Okay. Um, next we receive a report from the Planning Commission Liaison. Yes, we did have a Planning Commission virtual meeting. So, uh, Mayor Protem Bavakwa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we, um, it was a relatively short meeting, um, a couple of key things. Um, one of our planning commissioners, Brian Gregitis, um, resigned. He, uh, works with the government in some capacity and was transferred or, uh, got a, a job closer to where his family is, so he's moving on. So we are accepting, um, applications for, uh, filling that position. And, um, we looked at, uh, a couple of different site plans for essentially, uh, um, parking lots. Um, the first one was the, uh, medical building at, uh, 1,000 West University Drive, uh, across from the Lutheran Church. Um, the owner of that facility is going to be, uh, doing landscape, uh, commit a slight renovation of the, uh, exterior on the, on the, uh, or something. So that was approved. Um, thing was needing, uh, putting in a parking lot, uh, required. And, uh, we also, uh, provided them with, uh, a special exception, um, uh, to locate their recreational use within a, uh, I've, um, so that was approved and moving forward. And then finally, we, uh, it, uh,
I think, uh, I think the mayor Protem is, we're having some technical difficulties. Um, so maybe, uh, yeah, so we, Mr. City Manager, we, we, we approved the, the medical building to, to go forward. Uh, we approved the, the gym on South Street to, um, move forward and got their parking situation together. What was, what was the third one?
Sustainability.
The state sustainability?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we, we talked about sustainability and kind of looking at that and kind of seeing if we think it needs some tweaks and there, there might be a few tweaks to it. So we're talking about that and of course that would have to come back to city council. I think, I think that's it. Mr. Manager, any others?
No, I think you summarized it and I'm sorry, Dean's probably having some internet connect.
Okay. So we'll just keep on going. Um, new business and referral, uh, Mr. City Manager, Mr. miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, so, uh, the check receipt, uh, there is from, uh, March 27th and also, uh, April 3rd. And then for my city manager updates, um, again, in the, the, uh, council, uh, packet, um, it's towards the end on page 93, and I'll just kind of verbally kind of hit on a few. Um, we continue each Friday at 6:30 PM to, to use the city's Ready Rochester alerting software and we're providing various updates. Um, in addition, when there are urgent updates, as there were today about the, uh, wind guest, gusts up to 50 miles an hour, um, we did, did utilize that software for, for informing our residents and businesses of that. Uh, additionally, uh, there's two other things I'd like to note. Um, to encourage, uh, social distancing, um, we have removed the basketball, volleyball and tennis courts nets. Um, we're also going to be placing some signage along the various, uh, paths, uh, and trails, uh, to again indicate, um, uh, and promote social distancing. There's a, a short video on the city's website as well. And finally, we were able to, um, work with GFL and they've announced as of tomorrow, the 14th, that, uh, yard waste collection will, will resume. So, um, previously last week, they informed, GFL informed, uh, communities that, um, they didn't basically have the staffing and equipment to be able to pick up and then due to the COVID virus, um, that they were going to have to stop as of this week. Um, they have reallocated resources from their business collection as well as ask for volunteers to work. And so as of tomorrow, uh, the, the, the 14th, um, that will resume any of the, um, yard waste for individuals in our community that have pickup on Monday today, um, should put it out, um, uh, tomorrow morning and that will be, uh, picked up as well. So, um, that will continue into the, the future as far as, um, as GFL understands it unless the, the governor changes, um, any of the restrictions.
Very good.
That's all I have.
Okay. Um, the city clerk, any comment?
I do have one item, your honor. Um, under normal conditions, uh, tonight's meeting, council would have received your, um, paper packet of the boards and commissions applications that we've received in. Um, for the new board members, uh, council members, um, typically, uh, the first meeting of May is when you make your mass board and commission nomination and then the second meeting in May is when the appointments are confirmed. Um, we did advertise, um, for openings in the beginning of March. Um, we also sent out emails directly to those persons, um, on the boards and commissions whose terms were expiring. Um, over the next couple of days, I will, uh, update the boards and commissions list, copy off those, uh, applications. I'll both email them to you and then your hard copies, um, will get delivered to your homes by the police department, um, much like any, we used to do. Um, so I wanted to let you know that tonight so that you would look for your package probably in the next couple of days on your porch. Um, and I think that is all I have.
Okay, very good. Um, Councilmember Albrecht, anything?
Uh, just one thing, um, uh, the Ra-Ra Board, uh, approved, um, having, uh, the employees who are, um, not working now because of the Ra-Ra being closed, going on furlough. We felt that taking advantage of the CARES Act where these employees would be able to get the, uh, maximum out of Michigan unemployment if they met the requirements, along with the $600 from the federal government for the CARES Act, was very prudent, not only for them, but for, uh, the financial wellbeing of Ra-Ra. Um, I would just urge, these are all great people who are on furlough. We hope they all come back when we reopen the Ra-Ra facility, but it was the right thing to do and, um, uh, we hope they all stay safe and are ready to come back when we reopen safely and securely, uh, our city, state, nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Albrecht. Uh, Councilmember Keith Lee?
I, uh, would just like to say thank you to our healthcare workers. Right now I'm thinking of Ascension Providence in Rochester that's been working really diligently, uh, to keep our residents and our surrounding community safe during this difficult time. I would like to ask our city manager if he's heard any updates from Ascension and if he hasn't recently, that maybe we could get an update from them next week to make sure that our hospital and our community is doing well and has the resources that they need.
Yeah, uh, ha- happy to do that.
Councilmember Salvia? Deeta, unmute. Councilmember Salvia?
Okay, yes, thank you. So just a quick update from Community House, um, they have applied for a grant, uh, to cover payroll, um, and pending to hear back from their bank, uh, to cover that, to reserve, um, conserve resources. Um, and then also just want to confirm, city manager, at the next meeting, are we having the Q1, um, finance report out? I think normally that comes in the second meeting after the quarter end.
I will double check with finance, but, uh, my understanding is they're working on it, so, uh, um, I, I believe we're on the right path, but I'll confirm with finance.
Okay, and so we'd just like to, you know, obviously, you know, these, this next month, two months, quarters are going to be very fluid, so any sort of comments or guidance around what they're seeing in terms of, uh, revenues that we're not seeing coming in or expected increase in expenses, even if they are, you know, what we would call guidance and what they think is going to happen, I think would help all of us feel more, um, informed about the, the financial state of the city.
Yeah, I, I would be happy to share that, um, both, um, uh, our finance director and assistant director actually today shared that we're, uh, pretty close to being on track with our water and sewer and other utilities as they're coming in. Um, we have not had any requests, uh, to, to do the payment plan options, um, that, you know, were extended previously and again through consent today. So, um, some of those early indicators that were back in '08 and '09, um, uh, they've not seen signalization yet in that regards, but, um, happy to bring a full report, um, in an upcoming meeting here, uh, very shortly.
Okay. Councilmember Sage?
Uh, nothing this evening, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of things. One, if we could do our due diligence to inform the public that about putting out yard waste or garbage, that it doesn't go into the street, it stays on the sidewalk. I've noticed a lot of it on this, uh, on, in the street. Um, other, uh, the other thing is we, I know, I'm not, I think we all received an email, uh, regarding the 5G, um, from a resident today. And my, uh, the concern was whether or not we could, I guess there's supposed to be an option to where we can actually, uh, put a moratorium on it to not allow any more to take place, uh, at least during this time. So I know it's not the time to discuss it, but if we could, uh, look at that and bring it back at the next meeting, uh, that would be great. And then one other thing I wanted to share with you on the real estate front, uh, just because it's looking really grim. Um, and I did share with the finance director today and some of the concerns, uh, but overall for the area, not just Rochester, but since the, uh, stay-at-home order has taken place, uh, we have, uh, seen, um, a real estate, uh, sales volume loss as to date of 314,195,000 dollars. And, uh, the 20% ancillary, uh, business losses for anything else real estate related is at 62,390,000. And knowing how our real estate, um, is cyclical, um, April and May being our big, um, spring market, uh, we're looking at 1,934,412,000 in pending sales volume decline. Um, and I think these numbers are important to note, um, as these numbers severely impact a lot of the dollars that the county receives, um, on state and county transfer taxes, the amount of money that we're going to receive in the, in the future as well and, uh, the loss of those transactions, uh, currently. So just wanted to update.
Thank you.
Also, are we going to make that motion?
Yes, I haven't forgotten.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor Protem Bavakwa?
Nothing tonight, sir. Thank you.
Uh, Attorney Carr?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, uh, the two chiefs and, uh, Nick Band is sitting with their social, good social distancing. Anything to add?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Jane, anything? She's not there, Sandy? Okay, uh, we do have some, uh, member of the audience, uh, the public, so I will unmute. Uh, if your last is 057, phone number. Do you have a comment?
Yes. It's just me, it's Pat Kane. Had to switch phones, batteries. I just didn't get a chance, I didn't hear public comment at the beginning and maybe we didn't have it. But I did let Blaine know and I want to acknowledge our city, Blaine, our, our department heads and multiple city council members did a fantastic job communicating thus far with the shutdown, isolation and the COVID to our community at large, and it has been greatly pre-appreciated. And also, um, a shout out to, uh, Christie Traval, the DDA and our merchants or business, the restaurants that are open, they've done a great job communicating their availability for food and carryout. And the residents have done wonderful, making masks, even got them in my office. And in addition to that, there's been an outpouring, not only from our police department, but from many individuals and businesses, for food, for neighborhood health and for the pantries, and that's greatly appreciated. So just a big thank you, uh, for the great communication and keeping those lines open so no one feels isolated when they're in isolation. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Now I will do the, uh, the, the motion from the closed session. Um, do we have a motion to, um, continue with the, um, hazard pay?
Yep, the continuation of the, uh, the, uh, premium pay for the workers, uh, that are on site.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson. Port, port by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bavakwa?
Yes.
Albrecht?
I laugh when everybody else does it and I did it too, so, uh, yes.
Thank you.
Keith Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
And Salvia?
Yes.
Thank you. And then just, uh, finally, just have a couple of things. Just again, thank you to the emergency services, um, for doing a great job and obviously, um, um, you know, the fire department, you know, it's, it's a risky job, so we appreciate what they're doing. Um, our, our city council meetings and board and commission meetings will continue to be online until further notice. Um, there is going to be a DDA meeting, uh, Wednesday, so it's the first time they've met online, so, um, that's a good thing. Also, I just want to reiterate what Pat Kane said, uh, the, the senior calls have been well received. Thank you for everybody, uh, from the city and the city council, um, who did a, did a job, uh, as the seniors are very happy to hear from us. Um, I did have one senior who said, I know who you are, Mr. Bixson, and I want to talk to you about traffic problems in the city. So I thought to myself that they were probably doing okay. And then, um, with the help of Jane, uh, we shot a little video, um, to talk about the city's response to coronavirus that I did and, uh, shooting a video from home is a little, little harder than, uh, I, I thought it was going to be, but that will be out there, um, pretty soon. So I think, uh, Blaine, do we have one more person? Has their hand raised here?
Um, it does look like that. I don't know if that was somebody from before or?
Okay, so, okay, without anything further, uh, thank you, everybody, very much. I know this is, is, uh, difficult, but I think we're making progress and have a good evening and everybody stay safe. So have a good evening. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye, everybody. Have a good evening.
Bye.